Monthly Board Meeting. Let us please. Ladies for Pledge of Allegiance led by Mr. Eric Swenson.
Pledge of allegiance to the right of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, united in the common good. The people of the village will be just for all.
All right. We have to first start off with our annual village organizational meeting. I want to congratulate trustees Frankel, Janice, Deputy Mayor Janice, and Collins for winning reelection. And have the two of them, Marla, signed the oak book?
Yes.
Excellent. So let's start with the annual organization meeting, which is always a hard one. Do you want to lead it or should I? Because I've never led the A1 before.
No, basically, you are.
Because some things, do we have to do anything as a resolution? Do I have to open? This is always a hard one for me.
You have to leave, you have to appoint all the one year, with all the one year appointments, number one, and the chairs of the mayors, which are one year appointments.
Okay.
And then there are a couple of, you're going to read, adopt all the village policies and resolution, all the resolutions. You can just do that as a whole entity. And.
So essentially, if I may, on the second page of the agenda, there's a list of Board of Zoning appointments.
Yes, sir.
And I believe this agenda is also being made a part of the record of the village. There's a resolution which would confirm the appointments of. Is this a public? So this would be a resolution as set forth in the agenda confirming the appointments for all members of the Board of Zoning, as set forth in the resolution. And that would be, then Michael Sun would be reappointed as chair, Peter Catawides reappointed as a member, Howard Miller as an alternate member.
Yep.
If there's a resolution, a motion being made to adopt that resolution.
I'll make that motion.
And is there a second?
Second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous. Then there is additionally a resolution confirming that Mr. Abensku will be reappointed as Chair of the ARC. Is there a motion to confirm that?
I'll make the motion.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Stand with the ARC. Would there be a resolution as set forth in the agenda that Kevin Soviero will be reappointed as chairman of the ARC with a term expiring April 2029?
Is it Kevin or is it Robert?
Here's where it is Kevin.
It's either Robert Soviero.
Robert Soviero, yeah.
Or Kevin Nissala.
So it actually is correct on the body, it's just not correct on the top. So we will make it that it's Robert Soria, Soviero.
Robert Soviero. Is there a motion confirming Robert Soviero is set forth to be on the ARC through 2029, April 2029?
I have here's 2028. Is it 28 or 29? There's two different.
It would be 2028.
Okay. So I'll make the motion for 2028.
I'll second.
And all in favor? The next is, there's a series of trustee designations. And while I don't believe these need to be have formal resolutions since they're on the agenda, I'd like to distribute them and ask if there could be a resolution accordingly. This would be that Mayor Rosenbaum would be the primary designate handling Roslyn Fire, Roslyn Water, Port Washington Water, and Northern City Management, with secondary as to its HHPC, Roslyn's Wheels and Finance Committee. And I won't read through each of the others. There are separate designations for both Deputy Mayor, trustee Collins, and each of the trustees, quite frankly. And then going over two pages, which are kept as a matter of record, is there a motion to confirm and resolve that those appointments be approved?
I'll make that motion.
And is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
There's no changes for anybody from last year.
And then there is a, if there could be a motion, please for appointment of the registrar of vital statistics, this will be a reappointment of Susan Williams with a term to expire April 27. Is there a motion to adopt that resolution?
I'll make the motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The Board of Ethics, engineer, their terms remain in place, so there might not be any new appointments, but they are set forth in the agenda. And then, I suppose this would be, sort of speaking about myself, but there is a proposed resolution to continue to appoint the fellow Dominic Blenka, or it will be a one-year appointment expiring April 26. And ask him hopefully if there's a motion to approve that resolution.
I'll make that motion. I will make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second. Dominic will second.
All right, well then, I will not read through each of the resolutions on the next page, but to quickly review them, these are appointments for village engineer, the ability for the board to engage other engineering purposes may be needed, to appoint a chief code enforcement officer and additional code enforcement officers, as well as code compliance officers, and the village arborist. So I would ask if those resolutions in total could be, if there's a motion to approve those?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Hold on, hold on. Well, only for Aunt Frankel's village arborist.
Yes.
Because we have a second one.
And I should point out that those motions are consistent, essentially with prior years as well.
Oh Jeff, Claire just came in. Can we start all over?
I'm not seconding that motion.
There are then several pro forma resolutions that deal with payment of auto expenses, the adoption of the official village newspapers, village bank, payment in advance for the artist claims, the employee policy, investment policy, and the, I would ask that those pro forma resolutions be approved in one block, if there is a motion to do so.
I'll make the motion.
And is there a second?
Second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
And then each year, the village passes a resolution with respect to assessments of the property taxes, that they would be levied on the Nassau County Assessment Rule. Again, this was essentially pro forma resolution. Is there a motion to approve that?
I'll make the motion.
All in favor? Or second? Trustee Smith, all in favor?
Aye.
Each year, the village is required to adopt procurement policies and procedures. It pretty much remains the same from year to year, but does need to be adopted each year. Essentially, that is the requirement that the village has to have a procurement policy in place for anchoring that is under the amount where the limit is required to be set up to bid for goods or services contract. The procurement policy here, I believe is consistent with those that have been in place in prior years. And quite frankly, it's all based upon a section of the general ESOL law, which is 104B. I would ask if there is a motion to approve that resolution?
I'll make it.
Trustee Smith, is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then finally, on the last page, you'll see a series of resolutions that pertain to professional organizations in training that allow for the authorization for various officials or employees to attend training. There's a sexual harassment policy that has previously been adopted, but would need to be continued, a fixed asset policy, and the remaining additional policies, which are pro forma items that are passed from year to year. But I think these are all, if people wish to see the full document, they're in front of the village. But I would ask if there is then a motion to approve in one block the remaining pro forma resolutions on the last page? Is there such a motion?
I'll make the motion. I just want to be clear that this also includes the emergency management plan.
Yes.
I know, I just want, I'm just, I'm just reiterating because that's actually the most important. They're all important. That one has special importance that I want to make sure that that's specifically been updated and passed.
And is there a motion then to approve?
Then I will make that motion.
Second?
I'll second.
And finally.
All in favor?
And then if we could, because I don't think we addressed it, on the very first page, there are three resolutions that pertain to setting annual leave day for the board trustees, as well as the rules of procedure for the board trustees, which would be deemed and accepted as being recommended by the New York State Conference of Mayors or NICO Com, a copy of that is on file with the village. And I would ask if there are resolutions to approve those?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
And finally, this, because I don't, I keep saying finally, but this is what I really mean. On the very bottom of the first page, you will see that the one year appointments that we will refer to and ask specifically adapted in the prior discussions. These are the offices of Deputy Mayor, Associate Village Justice, Chief Village Prosecutor, the two village prosecutors, village historian, landmark commission members, North Shore Cable Commission Representative, Hempstead Harbor Protection Committee, Manhasset Bay Protection Committee, and the emergency management coordinators, of which there are two. And I would ask if there is a motion to approve those in one block, please?
I'll make the motion.
And second?
I'll second.
Trustee Janice, all in favor?
Aye.
And I believe those are all.
Thank you. That's much more effective than me doing it. We'd still be here to tip off tonight. I would now like to make a motion to open up the public hearing portion of our meeting. Seconded by, that's Ms. Dorfman, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, we are striking the site plan review application for Lamonti. They have to postpone until next month when they will have the further information about the parking. So strike that one. Next, the most exciting part of our evening is our budget presentation. All right. So thank you to our treasurer Suzanne Tangredi and our village administrator Marla Wolfson for their contributions in putting this year's budget together. It was a long process, new software, which always makes things a little more interesting. And thank you, Rich, for putting together your department's budget this year. Wonderful. All right. As always, I like to start off with our capital equipment, so we can see where we are with our hardware and where we need to go. As always, our highway department does a great job maintaining our equipment, which is why some of this equipment here, as you'll see on the chart, is pretty old and it has lasted significantly longer than the original expected life. So thank you, Rich, for babying all of our equipment. This year, we replaced two pieces of equipment, the F-550 and one of the F-350 pickup trucks. We were fortunate that we had ARPA funds that enabled us to make that very.
We had lucky.
ARPA, I apologize. ARPA funds, A-R-P-A, which helped lessen the burden of those purchases. As part of our short and long-term capital plan, we will continue to place funds in our capital reserves annually to save money for equipment replacement. Specifically, we need to replace the very large dump truck, the International. It is beyond its life. It needs work. And we really should start saving up to replace the payloader, which came into the village in 2000. And then lastly, the code car, it's seen better days and we've been putting some money into it to keep it running, but those are the three things. But in order, it'll probably be an international dump truck so we can power roads, then the payloader, and then the SUV. Roads scoring card, thank you, Rich, as always, for putting this together on an annual basis. So overall, our roads continue to be in pretty good condition, though we had some wear and tear this year based on a more active plumbing season than I expected. This year, when it comes to the roads we're going to tackle, we're going to do something new and really take advantage of a great opportunity that the town of North Memphis has, where we're going to piggyback on their asphalt paving contract. This low negotiated rate per square foot will save Water Hill taxpayers significant money. With this lower rate, actually, we're going to be able to pave more feet of road than we normally do each year. One of those key roads will be Stonetown, which we will do from the village border at Plandome Manor up to the crosswalk by the park, the pedestrian crosswalk. If it wasn't for the water district still doing work, we would have gone all the way to Port Boulevard, but we'll hold off. Hopefully, we can get some funds from the water district and then we'll tackle that later. Additionally, National Grid is undertaking a very large gas main replacement project in the Ridge Drive East, Ridge Drive West area. You can see what they're doing here. And they will be funding a good portion of the cost to replace those roads. So we're going to have to do Ridge Drive East, Ridge Drive West, Peach Tree, Crab Tree, Overhill, a little bit of Center Drive, and that little piece of greenway that goes to Middle Neck Road. And unfortunately, they're going to cut into Middle Neck Road, which is a relatively new road, but we'll have it repaired back to the way it was. And the other project we have is the Country Club Brookside area. And that, and the Stonetown road is pretty much going to come from our banked chip funds, which really keeps down any burden to taxpayer. And then for next year's project, I know it came up before where we wanted to do Mason Drive in the Iggy J and Gary area, but the Long Island Railroad is still working on the overpass. And until they finish the Webster Avenue Bridge, I don't want to pave a road just to find out that heavy machinery is coming and it's going to damage the road. So we will look hopefully to repair that road last year.
Heavy machinery has started and has damaged the road.
So then I'm very glad we didn't do a project this year. I know, we wanted to do it last year and we knew, we moved last year to this year and we expected the worst. Happy to hear that they messed up, that they messed up a damaged road versus a brand new road. New slide this year from last year. Thank you, Marla, for this one. This is all for our, our capital spending, how we're going to get from where we are and where we want to be. So we have two reserve funds. The first one is our roads fund, which we have a starting balance of almost $52,000. We will have available up to $562,000 in chip funds. From there, we're expecting $95,000 or so from National Grid for that project that I mentioned before. And we're adding from this current year's budget, $50,000 to our capital plan, which for the roads, so we'll have $759,000 balance for the capital plan, for the roads. Now we have to subtract our costs. Stonetown's going to be about $200,000. The whole Ridge Drive East section, about $125. The Country Club Brookside, that's $39,000 estimated. There's going to be some curb work that needs to be done at the intersection of Ridge Drive East and Ridge Drive West that we budgeted for $24,000. And then there's some catch basin framing hoods that need to be replaced. You might see the occasional traffic home protecting the area until we can get that done. And that's about $15,000. So projects this year is about $402,000, which will leave us with a balance in our roads capital plan for $350, almost $7,000. Now, if we look at the hardware side, which is the next part of the slide here, we have the same $52,000 in savings. We're transferring 50 from this current year, gives us $101,000 for a grand total of $458,000. Oh, I'm sorry.
We have the same $52,000 in savings. We're transferring from.
This year's budget, $50,000.
$50,000 to make a total of what?
$101,000. So that's where all of our funds are coming from for our big projects and we will continue to save in the '25, '26 budget. We're going to put some money in for the roads and we're also going to put some more additional money in for our capital equipment. And again, the capital equipment is to replace those vehicles that are way past their expected age. And we don't want to break them down in the middle of a big snowstorm or a big hurricane or anything else where we do this equipment. All right. Now we're up to the expenses. I'm going to show this slide and then another slide. This slide includes fire. Our Port Washington fire cost has increased slightly from last year. The Roslyn Fire Service cost decreased a little bit from last year. So this slide shows all of our expenses, including fire, of a grand total of $763,000 for fire. That's just a pass through. When that money comes into us, we pretty much pay it right back out to the fire districts. Unless you're a Manhasset Fire resident, that money you're paying to the town. So that won't come here. But instead of inflating our budget, what I like to do is I go to the next slide where I take fire out and that gives you a more realistic representation of changes when you're taking that money out. So we go from a $4 million budget, our expenses, down 3.3 million. So this is a little more realistic. So as always, our prime, or at least my primary goal, is to be fiscally conservative and try to do the most with the least amount of waste. Very important. Year-to-year inflation for goods, services, and insurance continue to rise. It's the same story from every year. We continually try to seek better pricing from all of our current vendors or search for new vendors. Marla's been instrumental in looking for some of these new vendors and will continue to do so. And we will change out as need be if we can get better services at lower prices. Inflation has been significant effect on our costs over the last four years. New York State Controller published some very interesting data. It shows that municipal costs have, are growing nearly 20% from '22 to '25. So three years, our costs are going up 20%. And that's your basic stuff. Everything Rich needs for the park, all the gas he uses, diesel, all the, all the products we consume to keep our village beautiful, salt, everything is going up. And again, I'm going to thank Rich for about the eighth time tonight. Thank you, Rich, because you and the highway department are continually to, able to perform equipment maintenance themselves, which saves us significantly by not having to take the equipment out to mechanics. So again, thank you, Rich, and everybody for doing that type of work ourselves. Now I get to our categories, where we are saving some money this year and some categories where things have gone up. So our clerk, our staff and clerk salary has gone down slightly from the old clerk to the new clerk. So you'll see there's a little savings there. We're down 7%. Highway, going forward, that line, those items won't hit our budget for vehicles. We're going to pull that out of the capital budget. So that's why this year's budget will see a decrease of 27%. Any vehicle equipment purchases won't come directly from here. And our employee benefits have actually gone down. That's due to, it's predicted to go down due to the incentive program that we passed two months ago. So if our employees are able to go on another person's insurance, there will be a savings to them and a savings to us. And we had a few eligible employees no longer be participating in our insurance plan. So category increases. The judicial one went up a lot, but it really didn't go up a lot. What we've done this year is I wanted to get a better and more accurate handle on what our court actually costs us to run. So what we're doing is we're taking our retainer that goes to Jeff's law firm and we're dividing it up, that the portion that normally goes to our court is being assigned to that portion and the regular portion that goes into legal other is going to be deducted. So that's why court judicial goes up 21%, $22,000 increase. And the legal other goes down because we took those monies and popped it into judicial. So that's kind of the little balancing act of why one went up a lot and one went down. Our economic assistance, which is our parks budget, so we are committing additional funds to beautify our village islands and medians. And thank you.
Island?
And medians.
Medians.
I forget you're here. I must speak towards you.
You are so fast, Mayor, but keeps us fresh.
Yes. I want to thank the Beautification Committee, trustees Lundowski and Collins, and those residents that are participating in the Beautification Committee to help beautify the islands, but we need to get the monies into that budget to do some of the work of the plantings and all the prep work we need to do. Our special items have gone up due to the higher cost of village insurance. And my favorite topic is the security patrol, which comes from the code enforcement budget line. This line item is higher than last year by 21%. And the reason it is, is when we first did the security patrol this current year, at one point, we were considering switching from a law enforcement officer patrol type company to a non-law enforcement personnel staffed car. And we had such positive outcome by having trained professionals in the cars, we opted not to switch to a low-priced company, which is why the cost is going up. Had we decided to, had we, had we budgeted this current year now, we would not see a change in this budget. It was just something we expected to possibly change and we decided not to because we had very good results from our law enforcement officer patrol cars. So overall, on our expenses, we're able to pave more roads, beautify our village, and continue to provide great service to our residents while having a budget 2% less. We're actually spending 2% less this year than last year. We're staying under the 2% state mandated tax cap and not using village reserve funds. So this is a very good and strong budget. Here is everything in a pie chart, which pretty much is the same numbers from before, just so that we can see where their tax dollars are going visually. Revenue, money's got to come somewhere to pay for all this. Okay. So we have some revenue increases. First of all, the use of money in property. We are earning higher interest rates on our reserve and operating fund balances. So that has gone up by 12% from year to year. Our licenses and permits are going at 8%. We, as a board, changed our fee structure a few months ago to better align with other North Shore village fee schedules so that we're in parity with them. Our fines and forfeitures are going up, it's 13%. We have a more active court and with an active court, we're bringing in more revenue for there. Our miscellaneous has increased 36%. Part of that is pilot payment in lieu of taxes, which is coming from St. Francis as they are purchasing some of the properties on Oak Tree. And thank you, Marla, for the sponsor median program where funds are coming in to that which goes directly into the Beautification Committee. Fund balance has gone down. We are not taking money from the fund balance this year, which is a positive thing. And then lastly, which is the first thing, the question is, how much are we raising taxes? So the tax levy is only going up 1.7%, which is below the New York State tax cap. And all this will be posted, actually, it is posted online already, but except for one slide, so I will resend you the capital plan and then we can post that one more. And that is my budget presentation. So I'm going to start with questions from the board and then I'll go to questions from the public. And I will look to the left first, then I will look to the right second.
We had a budget meeting, it's really the same budget we're talking about.
It is, but I didn't know if there, and we made some changes, which I already, I already detailed to you all in an email. And if there's no other questions, I will, Gary's going to ask the question.
Just curious, it just dawned on me, is there a reason why we don't look at the revenue without the fire?
No, we do. The revenue without the fire?
Yeah.
Give me with the fire. You mean with the fire?
Well, oh, this is, isn't this with the fire? I'm looking at the $4 million mark for revenue. I guess, I don't know if you can separate that or not.
You know, Gary? That is a very good question. And I could probably do that. But I didn't. Because I haven't done it the last couple of years, and no one's asked.
Probably take someone.
But you've been doing this for how many years?
I know. Well, you know, I'm not fast, but I'm, you know, I'm sure.
I guess we could. But the primary reason really is when it comes to expenses, it's with fire in there. If you're raising something else, fire is such a big chunk. It's not a fair conglomerate. But the same would be safe for revenue.
Wouldn't this change, though? Would the top line change? Because you told us that costs went up on the fire. And so I'm presuming that means tax revenue has gone up on that basis as well.
I would probably say the answer is.
So just like, what is, what is a, I mean, because this is not valid for me because I don't pay fire through the village. So for me, this is not a valid number. And that's, it's not a controversial number, obviously. But I'm just, I think maybe that would be another way of looking at it.
I can redo the slides. I can post the slides. I can send you the slides. It's not too hard for you to do, except for knocking out. But that's, that's good feedback for your time. All right. Any questions from the residents of Flower Hill? Mr. Chieco. You need to give your name and address for the record since this is a public hearing.
I need to have it spelled.
C-H-I-E-C-O. What first name? The A-W-N? Ian? I-C-K. C-H-I-E-C-O. Seventy-five walnut.
Seventy-five?
Walnut. So first, quick transparency. Thank you. Pretty in depth. Understood most of it. Three things. The slide is hard to read for us here because it gets cut off on the top. That's for the future. That's not, that's just how it is.
Damn technology.
Yeah, the lens on it.
Yeah, it's the lens thing. So.
We need a new one. Put it into budget.
We need a screen.
We need a new AP department.
It means an increased cost of the technical. No, so you had mentioned that by piggybacking on Nassau County's road.
Town in North Hempstead.
Okay. We're covering more territory by paying less per, let's call it miles. But are we spending as much to get more? Or are we, are we taking advantage of the piggybacking? Increasing road coverage and still spending what we had budgeted?
I think we're taking advantage of being able to do more and paying less. Like, if it was just, if we, if we weren't able to get this great rate that the town is paying, we probably this year would only do possibly just Stony Town. And it might not have been as much of Stony Town that we're able to do. We might have been only able to do half of Stony Town if we weren't going to do the Hewlett area. We have to do the Ridge Drive East and West because, I should have brought pictures. There's holes every 20 feet right now in the road. So that road totally has to be redone. Yeah, I think we're able to get Stony Town redone as much as we're doing because we're having this better rate. Otherwise, I don't think we would have been able to do as much as we normally would do. Oh, and quick, for Gary. Yes, Gary, we're going to repave the stripe. And we're going to put the group payments, the rumble strips. Because you forgot to ask.
Was on my mind.
I know. On Stony Town. With a protected path face for the bike lane, the jogging lane. I just psychically remembered. I apologize for cutting you off. Go ahead, sir.
I appreciate that. The pilots.
Yes.
With the trade-off, if you will, with Delta.
Identify anything of the pilots?
With the, with regard to the trade, I'm going to call it a trade-off. I don't know what else to say, right? So Frank St. Francis, they pay as pilots.
Yes.
Now that they, and now that they're purchasing property, it's become pilots. So that line moves up because it's there. Is there a decrease in tax that we would have gotten if they were to stay residential?
Correct. So right now, we're made whole.
Yeah.
So every dollar that we're losing in the taxes on those properties.
Is the.
The properties.
Every dollar that we're losing.
Losing on the properties that are tax-exempt is being offset by the pilots.
So it's a one-for-one?
It's right now a one-for-one, correct.
All right, last, now just.
And just so you know, pilots are a year-to-year thing. We hope that every year that they continue with their pilot payments.
So it's a voluntary thing?
Pilot is 100% voluntary. Yes.
And so, okay, my last question.
Yes, sir.
Where would the pilot for St. Francis mega property be on your charts or?
They currently do not pay a pilot for the mega property. They never have. But as they were taking those other properties, we needed to be made whole.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name's Elizabeth Avlon. Elizabeth with an S. It's A-V-A.
Say it again.
Elizabeth with an S. My last name's Avlon. I'm at 451 Dogwood Lane. You mentioned that you brought up the permitting fees to be more in line with other villages in the area. To what extent is the 20% of our revenue also in line with those villages? Meaning, are most villages surrounding us also collecting that degree of income from permitting fees?
I would say that those villages that have similar fees proportional to their budget, it's the same.
And why was there such an increase in permitting fees in the last year?
Because we haven't raised our permit fees probably in.
As long as I've been on the board.
It's probably eight years we haven't raised our permit fees. Yet, the cost of running this village has increased as the cost of anything else has increased. So we have two options. Raise our taxes or raise our permit fees. And when you raise your permit fees, it's putting the onus on those people who are using more services from the village to pay for those services instead of everybody, all the taxpayers, paying for those services.
And to what extent are other villages charging a road impact fees?
There are other villages that are doing a road impact fee. I don't have a list of which villages, but there are other ones doing it. We were not the first.
I guess my one question on that is how do you justify road impact fees in light of the fact that you're requesting bonds to similarly protect against road damage? They seem to be overlapping in there.
So we have two of them. One, the road impact fee affects all roads. So I assume you're having a construction project to your house?
Yes.
And that's possibly why you're here?
More than once.
Okay. So as the heavy equipment comes in to build a house, knock down a house, deliveries, that affects all of our roads, not just the road in front of your house. And those funds are used to repair and repave all of our roads. And even our catch basins. So, Rich, why do the catch basins disintegrate?
Because of overflow from construction, sand and dirt falling to our catch basins. It just.
And large equipment drive over the catch basins, and eventually they collapse. The reason we have a bond is if there's specific damage to the road, let's say, use example in front of your house, your contractor, for whatever reason, digs a hole in our road, it's to repave that part of the road. Now, if the road. Marla, do you remember how often do we actually hold on to a road bond? It seems that in almost every case, we give that bond back.
In my 15 years doing this in three different villages, similar villages, never once. It's not something villagers, you know, look to do or really have to do eventually. People need CEOs, they do what they have to do.
It's an insurance policy, basically.
And also a bond, the road bond gives itself with the house bond also to ensure that people, you complete your project. Because there are, it's not often, but every now and then, someone doesn't complete the project. And it sort of incentivizes people, like a builder, for example. If they don't have a fire, like they ain't going to literally walk away and they're like, well, I can't. There are people who live around the country. It happens. It's sort of a little bit of an incentive.
So by, yeah, by having the road bond, if the road in front of the house project is damaged, in those cases, the contractor homeowner will repair the road and they get the bond back. It's just, as Gary said, it's an insurance policy. It's to hopefully ensure that the roads are left the way they were first found.
And notwithstanding the fact that construction increases the cost of taxes being paid to the village, it seems that those costs are easily offset by that, no?
No. Your, your. A home will have increased taxes paid to the village. It takes time for that assessment to go through Nassau County. It doesn't happen overnight. It takes a few years. It doesn't offset that. We have a building department. We have a roads department. Roads department is out there all the time near new construction. We have to keep on cleaning the basins because the contractors keep on dropping soil and debris in the roads. We have a building department. Those are costs that have to be borne by somewhere.
And also understand that your village tax is a very small percentage of the tax you pay.
No, I understand that. I guess.
So if you're paying $1,000 a year tax and your, and your overall tax goes up 2%, you're only talking about $20 a year difference, so.
Right. No, I'm more astounded by the fees that are being assessed in terms of permits and licenses. And on top of that, a road impact fee, which, again, I question how a village has, you know, the authority to assess so much just simply by virtue of construction in the area.
You can check Cole Sands' point. Ask them what their permitting and impact is on. You'd be shocked.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? That being said, I would like to make a motion to adopt the 2025-2026 budget. Seconded by?
I'll second it.
All in favor? Are there any objections?
Do you have to take a vote individually?
There is a.
For budget?
Yeah.
You have to poll? Do you want to poll?
Yes, I'll poll for budget.
Okay.
So the resolution, which is written and presented to the board, would be, it be resolved that the Board of Trustees has reviewed the tentative budget according to section package. Back going into down. Of the general.
Five.
I will also be decapitated. And the general municipal law. And all required publications have been made in a timely manner. And be a further resolved that upon completion of a public hearing, the tentative budget has been found acceptable. Therefore, be a further resolved that the tentative budget of the Incorporated Village of Flower Hill for the fiscal year commencing June 1, 2025, and ending May 31, 2026, being the same hereby is adopted as the final budget. And be a further resolved that the provisions of this resolution shall take effect immediately. Is there a motion?
I guess I will make that motion.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous.
I'm going to make a motion to close the public hearing portion of the meeting at eight, sorry, 7:45.
And I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, just in terms of perhaps a suspension, I would just ask that there could be a conjunction with that a secret resolution that this has no significant impact on the environment and is a type-two action.
I will make that motion.
Is there a second? Someone else?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right. Now I'm making the motion to close the public hearing portion of the meeting. Seconded by Trustee Dorfman. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll speak slower, but I really won't. Public comment portion of the meeting. Is there any public comments that hasn't been stated at the budget portion of the meeting? That being, that being said, no. I would like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the March 3 Board of Trustees meeting. Somebody want to second it? Mr. Dorfman has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. Motion to approve claims. This would be a motion to approve claims in the total of $156,673.37.
I'll make the motion.
Deputy Mayor, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The extension for our landscape.
No one seconded it. Oh, who seconded?
Who seconded?
No, I made the motion. You seconded.
I made the motion.
Oh, then I seconded. Sorry. Lost track. We're here all week. All right, Mr. Swenson. Thank you for waiting. I apologize that we had the annual organizational meeting. So the reason Mr. Swenson is here is I have questioned the reason why Flower Hill should remove part of the Hempstead Harbor Protection Committee. And specifically, my questioning is because the village of Roslin recently proposed a large, Jeff, how many building, how many units, 53, 40 something?
Developer proposed.
Yes, sorry. A developer proposed a large development of 50-plus units in Hempstead Harbor on the property just north of the viaduct. And my question, and I I spoke to Eric a few months ago, and he said, doesn't the Hempstead Harbor Protection Committee object to this or at least have any concerns? And I won't put words in your mouth, but explain to us why the Hempstead Harbor Protection Committee does not get involved in these types of situations.
If you're right, I think it will history of the protection committee and how we can do for all the municipalities.
Give it all the lights.
We are in our 30th year. We we are formed, we were the first intermunicipal committee on Long Island that focuses on water protection. Since then, nearly every major water body on Long Island, the South Shore, have a similar protection committee. And basically what we are, and I'll explain how it came about. Back in about, you know, 30, 40 years ago, there were a lot of problems in the harbor. We had the sand lining went out of business. There were about 80 rotten barges in the in the lower harbor. Roslin sewage treatment plant, it was an operating plant then, but it was failing. A lot of times putting the sewage into the harbor. There were a number of superfund sites around the harbor and a number of all the problems. So the problems were so severe that no one level of government was wanting to take responsibility for it. Because everybody shares the harbor, you know, who should take responsibility? So there was a meeting between then state assemblyman Tom Monopoly, now state controller, and the former village secliff there Ted Blackburn. And they said, well, why don't we just form a committee and we'll all work together instead of pulling fingers? And someone in Monopoly, say, we'll get some funding to to not only create the committee, but hire the first prime time and take the director and pay for the first study that we'll get. All this source of pollution going into the harbor and, you know, preliminary, what could it be about that? So we've been around for 30 years now. Our first chair is a stranger to Flower Hill. He was former trustee, Bill Clemency, and then he was the deputy mayor and mayor for a short time. He was a long time trust chair of this committee. I've been the director for 22 years. And basically what we do, we work cooperatively. We're not incorporated, but we're just a committee of local governments, as are the other protection committees in Hassett Bay or Smithville Harbor. And we work on issues. We assist our members in a number of ways. We assist with the MS4 stormwater permits that you have to adhere to the state. We conduct water quality monitoring in the harbor. And we've been doing that with one of the best water quality monitoring efforts of water and sound. We track legislation, we're input on different requirements. I was a representative for Long Island for the development of the new MS4 stormwater regulations. My job was really to relay that the burdens on local governments, especially small villages, you know. And we're able to make some progress, but obviously, you know, we can't tell the state what to do.
No, and this year it's a lot more. And last year it's a lot more paperwork and filings we have to do.
Right. We also get grants, we've got millions of dollars in grant funding. The most recent grant we have was from the EPA, through Congressman Swasey, where we were able to put a million seed oysters in Hempstead Harbor. We've also got similar amount in Oyster Bay Harbor in Hassett Bay to help clean up the bay. We also monitor, follow large projects. For example, we Army Club Engineers wanted to put Title Beach, try to drive that bridge, which when they were closed, would flood our harbor and endanger some of our storage sites, et cetera. But we basically don't take decisions and have never taken positions for or against anything that comes before our member organizations. We're there as a resource to provide information. If a municipality asks for our advice as to how a particular project comes before them, what impact of what I call improvement plan we have developed and what municipality signed on to, we're part of management, we're glad to do that. If another municipality asks us, you know, to give them advice as on a particular project, we can do that. In in the case of the Roslin apartment complex, which is right now to 50 units, we were not asked by the village of Roslin to to review that. You know, it's it's not up to us to do that. It's up to the our members to ask for that kind of information. So we, you know, we've tried to work cooperatively. We don't want to put one of our members against another member and be in the middle of that. That's not what our role is. Our role is really just to assist you in any way you want us to.
Thank you. Sorry.
And they also did check with the other protection committees and they operate the same way and have the same policies.
So quick question. So I I know the committee intimately, obviously, as I was on it for many years with you. So if 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 there is a project going on that is adjacent to another village, let's talk about this Roslin housing development. Since it's within literally hundreds of feet of our village, correct?
No, it's actually. It's adjacent to property. It's it borders our property.
Can can that village ask for your assistance? Or would you stay out of that because that you feel that would be a conflict between Roslin and Flower Hill?
Flower Hill asked for us to review, yes.
Oh, you would? Oh, okay. Well, I thought we had that conversation at the symposium at the Saints Point Preserve. And it sounded like from our conversation that the Hempstead Harbor Protection Committee did not want to be involved when I stated that we were very concerned about many of the environmental issues that such a large housing project right on the wetlands would possibly cause.
Maybe it was my mistake, but I thought you were asking if we take a position against it. We don't. We can offer information, you know, about, you know, what the issues we would see. We can do that.
So not even again, so I guess my bone of contention here is you can have concerns about a project, correct? I assume you want to protect the water. And no matter what you build, literally on the waterfront, right there, where there's, I know you're a kayaker. There's a lot of nice kayaking and there's a lot of nice wildlife and it's a wetlands. You have to assume that any construction could damage our water. And I don't know why the Hempstead Harbor Protection Committee, you don't have to necessarily be objecting, but you're not even part of the process, if I understand correctly, to express concerns. Is the Hempstead Harbor Protection Committee all involved in that project? Or in in asking questions to the village of Roslin?
We have at our meetings. And as you know, the village of Roslin's representative happens to be one of the people that's proposing to build this project.
So that sounds like a real conflict of interest that the person representing the village of Roslin on the Hempstead Harbor Protection Committee is the interested financial party in this. You don't find that problematic?
No, no, there is definitely a potential for a conflict of interest there. On the other hand, it is also, you know, I think an advantage for someone like that to to be able to hear firsthand from, you know, people at our meeting, what their concerns are and their responsibility serves.
But you don't go on the record at all at the public. Right, which I don't understand. So Flower Hill has waterfront property. If we tomorrow approved a plan for a large waste transfer facility using barges, which would be terrible for the environment, what would Hempstead Harbor Protection Committee's opinion be on that? I'll answer it. You wouldn't have one because let's say we want to approve it and we didn't want your opinion on this. But having garbage barges in the harbor would be a terrible thing, wouldn't it be?
This has a potential for, you know, problems for sure.
So then why wouldn't the Hempstead Harbor Protection Committee at least be part of the process and ask questions? And again, Flower Hill make believe says, Eric, we don't want you involved. But isn't it fiduciary duty to the other members and the public?
If they ask for that, yes, we would, we would look into that. But we take direction from our nine municipal members. If they don't ask for us to do something, we don't take it upon ourselves to do that.
But I assume you'd want to.
I mean, the village.
I'm very, I'm very conflicted as to the passiveness of the organization when you should be more active, asking questions of a municipality that's potentially putting up something that could harm the environment. I would think the Hempstead Harbor Protection Committee, of all the people involved, would be the most important person.
Why don't we look at a project that doesn't, that is actually a little bit outside of our realm? And the project on West Shore Road, farther up the road, what happened on that project, for instance? Because that was a big, even bigger project.
The one that was just north of Hempstead Harbor, Bar Beach.
Yeah, would that be a proposed apartment complex on there? The the applicants, I think on behalf of the town of Hempstead, met met with us so that we could ask questions and, you know, understand the project more. You know, we don't take a position on it, but we were able to report back to all of our members the results of that meeting.
And was there a similar approach when the the projects in Glencoe, all the housing, the new housing projects?
Darby's point ourselves.
Thank you.
Back back when the project was in its early stages, it went to a couple of different developers. We were asked by the city of Glencoe to get involved and advise them on what they could do to mitigate stormwater. And we did. But more recently, the 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 city did not ask for us to get involved. So we just monitored it and put it back to our members.
And the same thing with that other project that's across from.
Glen Harbor? The Glen Harbor project?
Is that what it's called? Right where the power, just north of where the power plant used to be.
Just south.
South. South, sorry.
Glen Harbor, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that that was under the jurisdiction of town of Hempstead. They did ask us to get involved at some point. We did make some recommendations, I think, about.
So that was the host, the host entity, governmental entity, the municipality that asked. Is that that?
Oh, that's, that's one way. I mean, any municipal member can can ask for us to to look into it. I mean, if you're concerned about the Roslin apartment complex, you could ask us to.
We send our village attorney to every public hearing. Trustee Lewandowski also goes to many of these public hearings. We're, we're very concerned. And I think the biggest weight of concern would come from the protection committee that wants to protect the harbor. You might not be opposed to it, and I'm not 100% opposed to what's going on in Roslin. We just have a lot of concerns, or I personally have a lot of concerns. The traffic, such and safety, that's wouldn't be concerned for you. But I have a massive concern about all the stormwater runoff, which I assume that you're putting all the million little spat out there. That would be very bad for it. Those types of things. So I I'd like for the Hempstead Harbor Protection Committee to somehow ask the right questions so that the, so we can get the right answers. And I I kind of am not pleased that from day one, you never. You don't have to be there to oppose, but you could be there to ask questions. And I don't think you have to necessarily ask, be invited by the village that might want to push this project through and not have anything that's in the way. I think it should be part of your protection committee's mantra is to be aware of these types of construction projects and weigh in. But it doesn't sound like you're involved at all in asking any questions to the village of Roslin.
Maybe wishes us to do that, that we can do that.
So does that mean a single request or it has to be voted by majority of the committee?
We take our direction from the majority of the.
All right, so if our representative requested involvement, but the other participants either abstain or don't vote in favor, then you wouldn't be involved.
Well, if if the majority does not want us to ask questions or identify the issues, which I'd be surprised, but.
Just asking the theoretical question. All right, that's all I kind of had questions on. And Gary, I assume you want to say something else?
No.
No? Come on. We'll say something else. No, again.
I think it's a, it's a, it's a fair, I mean, I'm glad Eric was able to come in.
Yes, I appreciate you coming.
I think, I think there is a path to maybe, I think as a board, we need to, now, you know, as my, as a representative, I'm happy to take to the committee whatever the board feels is important to share with the committee and and see how it flies. So, you know, if that's the way to make sure whatever concerns the board has is is directed to that group, then we should do that.
So, yeah, from what I understand is, and so this is a committee. It's not an authority. It's not, so there are a lot of other people that will weigh in on this project, obviously. New York State DEC, you know, look, we know doing construction projects on the water, there's 100 million people. And trust me, we're doing a couple right now. And it seems like everybody crawls out of woodwork when you try to do something on the water. So just to separate, so that I I kind of understand that, so the rest of the board understands the difference between what the mission of the Hempstead Harbor Protection Committee versus the mission of, say, DEC would be. How does, how do they, how do you interact with them? Do you interact at all? You know, are you more of an oversight, to be kind of a watchdog, to make sure that state agency is doing what they're supposed to do? How does that work?
So we're not a regulatory agency.
Right, that's a committee.
But, you know, we, from time to time, you know, we do raise concerns with DEC. We've had some people illegally shell fishing in the lower harbor, you know, which is uncertified area, not safe. We reported that several times to DEC. Not that they did much about that. But, you know, when we can, we do. Which brought up, it brought my attention.
And I think if we're looking, I guess Eric might be brought to my attention at some point in our conversations about this topic. If we are looking to engage in a more activist group, if you will, it would be the Friends, right?
The Coalition is a part of it as a citizens group.
Right.
They're free to take positions for or against. They're not an advocacy group.
Right.
We're just an arm of you and every other municipality. You deserve, you know, what you collect if you ask us to do.
No, it was very helpful for you to come in and kind of explain the different roles because, you know, from the sound of it, Hempstead Harbor Protection Committee, one would think, you know, that you guys are, you know, standing out there as like greenpeace in the water and stopping things from going on.
I mean, like the word protection is in their name.
You're right, so that's why people, you know, I think our, some of our residents think that they have more authority than they do, when in fact they're really just advisory.
I mean, I can give you an idea of some of the issues that I think, you know, you could consider which based on our water quality plan and all of that. And that would be septic waste, the ability of the pumping station to handle that, the impact on wetlands and habitat, the view shed, irrigation, stormwater runoff, the increase in impervious surfaces, which sort of goes along with that. Sediment erosion control is a 50-foot change in grade from the road down to the bottom there. Deicing on paved surfaces, surfaces, what happens to the salt and all of that. The steep slopes and then during this building, the staging area, what's going to happen with the staging, you know, and culture, that sort of thing.
I, you know, they've, they've been very acute in development and going right to the DEC line. Like where DEC doesn't have jurisdiction in their development. So, I mean, obviously, they're on the upland side of that line. It's more naturalistic with this proposed trail or whatever. But but, yeah, there is a, there is very minimal border between what would be DEC jurisdiction and what's the upland plant development. So I think that's kind of a, to your point, you know, obviously, they need to have good sewer sewer system. And and but the runoff would be.
But that's the kind of, that's the kind of questions I was hoping that the Hempstead Harbor Protection Committee was going to be asking of the village of Roslin during this process. And again, if all the answers are to your satisfactory committee satisfaction, that's great. But you're not involved asking these questions. I mean, it sounds like the village of Flower Hill is asking a lot of these questions. We shouldn't necessarily be the, I hate to use the word term lead agency here, but it should be your group that's asking the questions. And if all the answers are 100% great, that means they're doing the right job. If not, and you go, guys, we have concerns about X, Y, and Z, and they change it, again, that's great. I thought that's what your role should be in protecting the environment. But it sounds like as of today, you're not with this project.
Well, it's brought before us in one of our meetings and the board agrees to do that. We will do that.
Okay.
Just what, I'm just one, we have one part-time person that's dealing with a lot of different things at once, so, you know.
Well, as our representative, I will hopefully have Mr. Lewandowski bring that up at the next board meeting. But it just concerns me being a member of this committee if that type of, if those types of questions aren't asked. And I'm a member of the, we are a member of the Manhasset Bay Protection Committee. And I pay a lot less for them than for you. And it's redundant to be in two groups from MS4 perspective. As long as I'm in one, I don't need to be in both. So I'm just trying to protect my taxpayer dollars here to make sure that they're being spent properly on an organization that's actually protecting our residents.
So the next committee meeting is a week from Thursday? Is that correct? A week from Wednesday?
I have to look. They're on Wednesdays.
Yeah. The day before, the night before is the next Village of Roslin board meeting, which they, I think it's back on the agenda. It's been, it's been adjourned for the last two meetings.
Mr. Blencuff, is is it on schedule since you've been representing us? Or you're not aware yet?
No, I think it'll be better.
I think it was adjourned, it was adjourned in February and March, I think.
So I have a question, Gary. So if if they, if they go up to the limits of what DEC can can, how does that protect water that's running from the part of the site that DC has no control over into the part?
Well, I, I, most villages, I think ours included at this point, you know, you're, you're supposed to.
A SWIP.
You're supposed to hold, yeah, yeah, right. You're supposed to deal with stormwater on your site. You can't let it go beyond your, the boundaries of your site. So and what's not clear to me is, is like, what are the boundaries of their site versus what is the DEC? The DEC's got to be all over the harness, though.
They would dank.
So I, I don't think that is, but, you know, we, as Frank pointed out, those projects we're involved with that, we know exactly, these are tough, tough things to solve. They're solvable, but they have to be thought through carefully.
There's two different things there. The letter of non-jurisdictions over DEC wetlands regulations, you know, so they're far enough back. The the stormwater pollution project and the SWIP that they would have to have, that's running to development over one acre and this is a little over two acres. So they would have to have an approved SWIP also that, you know, comes under the village of Roslin, but it's really, you know, to the DEC.
Right. There's a lot more. And and it'll, I thought coming out of the last formal hearing on this project, the mayor was pretty, pretty clear that he wanted to see a reduced project. So I think that. So I think that is probably the
Even if it's a reduced project or a larger project, as long as it's checking off all the boxes of the Hempstead Harbor Protection Committee, I'm okay with either size, as long as it's protecting our environment properly.
My point is, is that this is what happens with projects. They go through their iterations, and they're not ready to commit to a bunch of hard engineering and stuff until they finally get, like, this is the project. And so I think even though you can look at North Coast Engineering's plan, it's very basic. And it's hard to figure out what exactly, what the ultimate final engineering would be on, on the project. But I think it's something that we just need to to be aware of and, and, you know, if there, if we can get people to look at it and say, it's fine, it's fine, and if there's a problem, then let's you know, we hopefully can be, you know, helpful in remedying that.
So can you bring that up at the next Hempstead Harbor Protection Committee meeting? Get a pulse from them, and then we can decide if we're going to maintain our membership with that organization or not?
I believe just under the current zoning, they have entitled to 28 units as of right. And they're asking for an additional 22, which they would have to, you know, which can ask for special concessions for that, including density and all of that. So they're proposing right now, my understanding is, to build that walkway as part of that, and add 10% affordable home unit housing. The village has recently requested 20% from other projects, so I imagine that the village probably has to pursue some higher, you know, affordable component to that. But, and they can ask for other things, you know, as in order to grant up to now 50 that they're asking for, plus 54%.
Alright, well, thank you. Hopefully, HHPC will get on board in questioning the developer and the village that will make sure that all their concerns are taken care of.
Yeah.
Alright, any other questions from our board?
No, thanks, Eric.
Thank you, Eric. Always good to see you. Thank you for coming in. Next, proposed local law on site plan review, special conditions. I'm going to ask either Jeff or Peter to speak on that one, because this one always tongue ties me.
Sure, so
Thank you, Chair.
This is really the draft we have before, it really pertains to fees and land use applications. This is a draft of a local law that would allow for the village to obtain fees that are reasonable and necessary in their application across the four land use boards or the Board of Trustees Act's land use board. And it defines what the expenses are that are taken into account here. Expenses would include cost for engineering, legal spend, graphic, environmental and other consulting fees, as well as fees for advertising and recording fees. And then the board, from time to time, their resolutions would set and allow for what would need to be deposited. This isn't, you know, the village would not be seeking to be profiting by this. This is to recoup money that you're actually spending, you know. So you'd be, if the village board needs a consultant, and there's a complex project that comes before that board, the village board could then hire that consultant, and you would pass that cost off to the applicant.
So instead of the taxpayer paying for this, this would be, the applicant would be on the hook for those additional costs that the village deems necessary to hear this type of application.
And the idea, as drafted, would be that they would, the applicant would need to maintain a certain amount within the deposit. So if it shrinks below, I think I said 25%, they would need to add more into the pool, so that if the village needs to recoup more of that money for consulting fees, you know, like, you could do that. So I think it's a bit of a misnomer to say that this is focusing on the subdivisions, except to the extent that it does deal with I think there have been a question about maintenance of performance bonds. And this makes clear that each board committee or commission can require a performance bond beyond what's already in the code in any circumstance in which the board thinks that doing so would protect the village, the village's interests. So there already is
We're going to move this back to our
Okay, so that's, that's the first
Oh, you can move that back, Peter, anytime you wanted to.
That's the first proposal of this before you went in accord with the village's policies. This is just the first time on, so the board would have time to review this over the next month or so.
Correct.
The second was something that Pierre Obinski had been talking about, and this is something that I'm sure Peter's going to want to look at in the month or so in between as well. It's called lot averaging, but we've been referring to it as average density. And this is based on a review of several other villages that have these. Old Brookville has this type of provision.
I have the
One of the other Brookvilles has this type of provision, Sands Plain has this type of provision, I believe. And the concept really is that if a land use board has an application that comes before it, and it's generally there's a larger piece of property, the board can take into consideration that perhaps the property would, and the village would benefit by saying, well, we'll take in a sense of the average density and allow the property or to sort of perhaps consolidate in a closer range to each other the structures on the property, so that what you end up having is a surrounding area that benefits the village more, because it's more, it seems more open. It doesn't work in every area. You know, generally, you would have to have a larger plot of land. But right now, the village of Flower Hill code doesn't have something written in it that would allow for this to be applied. And the building department, I think, has found this to be a useful concept in other villages and wanted it to be brought for consideration by this board. You know, this is a fairly built-out village, that many properties are developed, but this is something that would still be potentially useful, should there be any large applications or the like come forward.
There's nothing in front of the village now. We're just getting ahead of things
Yes, yes.
if something was to transpire within the village.
And the way it's been drafted is pretty consistent with what other villages have done, but certainly the building department will be looking at it in, you know, the time in between. I just wanted to bring those before the board for consideration. And as I said, this is the first time on for this, so I realize it's yeah, fairly new.
Anybody have questions on this? I'm thinking I should make a motion to have this for public hearing number one at the May 5th Board of Trustees meeting. So I will make that motion.
One second.
Trustee Lewdowski, all in favor? Aye.
Can you stand for both local laws?
That'll be for both local laws. Now, before I go down the agenda, Mr. Obinski, do you want to do A R C and do what you need to do, or?
If I could.
Please.
Does that interest you? Okay, this is the March 31st A R C. Returning application, we had 41 Greenbrier. We had approval prior, it came back with some modifications, those were to approve this minute. 87 Fort Washington Boulevard. They came back, they come to a couple architects. We made some final adjustments to that, and those adjustments were, we're going to be approved. 35 Woodhill, again, in return. We still had quite a number of comments on there that we need to pull together. So we're asking to come back on to the May meeting. 1025 Northern Boulevard, that's the office building that had the fire. This was their first time there. We had some comments, we were looking for a little more enhanced detail and so forth. Just so you know, there was a question about using synthetic stucco, the stucco on there.
Right.
And first, but no, this is a prohibition, but it only applies in our code to
To residential properties, right.
So they might be coming in with that. It was just one of our committee members to use the New York City type, which is a fireproof type.
You would hope for that property they'd want to.
Yeah, you would think.
Yes.
What's the, what's the
Yeah, and the building would say, no, with non-strickled fire, now it would be a strickled building in all the fire safety requirements of the current code.
Right.
But we're still at the Architectural Review Committee level.
Yes, I'm very excited to see that building being redeveloped quickly, because it's been a shell for, nice, or thank you, for year and a half now, longer?
Well, you know, with insurance and all that, that's
And they went into, they were possibly going on a different path for a different type of building there, so, yes. So anything the A R C can do to expedite this? I would greatly appreciate it.
And then we had 38 Country Club Drive, that's a new dwelling. That's the one that has the small 5 on it. They're going to be replacing that with a home. It was a very nice design, we had a couple of comments about paving and maybe some street skate, camping.
Perfect.
One Letter Birch, a self-plant, another new dwelling. We had some comments on a couple of the details around. We're asking for those to be modified, and with that, an approval. 11 Westgate, there's some minor portico and a rear addition. We had some recommendations. One was kind of structural, but it affected the architectural part of the portico. And with that condition, based on the reviewing that we submitted, we will approve.
Well, I will ask
Interesting, interesting backstory to that one, I'll tell you later.
I will ask if anyone from the public has any questions or comments on these applications? The answer being no.
I don't see any hands.
I would like to make a motion to accept the findings of the Architectural Review Committee of the March 31st, 2025 meeting.
I'll make the motion.
So I was making that motion.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Lewdowski will be seen as a member of it. Thank you, Mr. Lewdowski. You can stay, but I know we I don't think there's anything else on the agenda that we need to follow. But thank you, you're more than welcome to stay. Okay, so at the last month's meeting, we had the sewer study bid results, where we had that one bid, which came in lower than our previous bid from years ago. And there were questions about the company, and we asked our village engineer, Steve Losniak, from S H L Engineering, to go out and answer the questions that we had. A good amount of them came from Trustee Lewdowski. So I'm hoping that you had a chance, the board, to read this, but in speaking to Steve, he checked the references, just that references worked out. He reviewed the bid. He said it was a good bid. In his opinion, the pricing was very reasonable in comparison to other projects. And one item he would ask us to talk about, about a specific map and plan, and I'm okay with asking those questions. But I think this answers the primary questions we had at last month's meeting. And if there are no other questions, I would like to entertain a motion to award to award the R F P for a sanitary sewer feasibility study to I M E G. Does someone want to make that motion?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Frankel.
I have a question.
Oh, too late now, I guess if you had questions.
No, I didn't hear that. I thought this was coming out of federal funding, and I thought this got funded with
State funding.
State funding.
There was an additional request to Congressman Swazi's office.
Right.
That was that is gone.
That's gone.
But these were two bids, in essence, for very similar projects.
That's fine.
Hedging our bet, if we wouldn't get one, then we might get the other. So with the changes in funding in Washington, that doesn't affect us for this project. This is a state grant that is it's there, waiting for us to spend.
We already had these funds. We received the money already.
Oh.
There you go. That's what I tried to do last month. So I had a proposal by Trustee Frankel. I guess I will second that. All in favor?
Aye.
And I just ask that there be a secret determination with this, and I'll hear back on that.
I will make that as a joint motion. So I think we're all in favor. And, see, Jeff, I have my secret speech, but you forgot to tell me you've read it, so. I was prepared this time, but I just didn't know I had to do the secret thing, just so you don't have to keep on reminding me. Well, that's why you get it right. I had him write it down, I keep it in my notebook, so I can do it properly. I think that there were no extensions and there were no nays, so that went past. Congratulations. Next, resolution for village to a home rule request for the stop sign. Yes. This is a project that
Yes, I go, yes.
This is a project that we hoped to have last year through our state government, and didn't happen in last year's legislative year. And this year, it's being promoted again. And this would be a test. So it would be a test, so that we, amongst some other villages as well, could install and operate stop sign photo violation monitoring systems as part of a demonstration program. After the demonstration program was ended, the state would look at it and decide if it's something that they would grant villages and other entities to incorporate. From my perspective, I think this test is an amazing thing. My number one spot to do something like this would be on Middle Neck Road by Greenway where the gates are. We have a crosswalk. It is a very active crosswalk where there's, the village Aubrist normally regularly crosses the street every day with her dog, and we want to protect her, right now.
Sure.
And a lot of kids cross
The other ones in front of the guy who's been pushing for this for the last eight years. I think we should have one in front of his house, whoever that person might be.
Well, that is an additional great location.
And that's a bill, yeah.
Yes, it is.
Is there any monetary, not yet, I guess it's a test. Up to $15. Up to $15 for them, but do we see that, or do we see anything, or some of it? It's $10, or $20,000.
I don't care if we get nothing, as long as my, thank you, my goal is to make nothing on this. We wouldn't be running this system. We would contract with a third-party company. There's a revenue sharing. The current system that's in the village of Saddle Rock, I've spoken with the company a couple of years ago, there's a revenue sharing program. The majority goes to the village, a small percentage goes to the company that owns and operates the cameras and does billing and all that such.
I don't care if there's any revenue, I just want it done, but I'm curious.
That crosswalk is incredibly dangerous. Kids go there every day.
I have had in the past three months, I can tell you, pulling out of Greenway at stop sign four to five times, someone didn't even stop. I mean, like, 40, 50 miles, 50 miles an hour, just straight through.
I did see an unmarked black vehicle on Greenway just the other
He said Saturday. He's a nice guy. It's a woman. Okay. We have one guy that sits there, super nice.
Good. I'm glad to see him, because the only way to make people stop and not, hopefully
And I said the guy, like, city of three minutes, she'll pull somebody out. Sure enough. It's the car right behind him, it was right through.
That is a, that is a frequent ticket in our village court. So we we're Saddle Rock. I'll show you the map. It's a beautiful little place, they have a gristmill there, it's right over
Saddle Rock?
Saddle Rock.
They have this, no, Kensington has this.
Saddle Rock.
Is that the one that they, they're doing illegally?
I'm not going to comment on that. Saddle Rock has been doing this for well over a year right now.
What does it look like?
Sorry, what does it look like?
I'm curious, is it a big contraption that goes over?
No, all it is, all it is is a small battery or, or solar operated camera. It has a cell phone modem, connects back to the server, and it's just using A I. There are no sensors in the ground. They can set the sensitivity to show how long a car stops. You can set that based on a threshold, so
Yeah, I guess the camera can figure that out.
It's just a camera doing whatever camera needs to do, just like your eyes saying, hey, that car didn't stop. Again, this is, this is a great thing, hopefully it passes the, our state government. So I need to make a motion
But.
Oh, aye, I know.
Like in New York City, there's signs up like, you know, stop.
Stop, stop right there, the stoplight camera ahead, yes.
Are we doing anything like that?
We are required to.
That was my question, are we doing anything like?
That is for discussion after we get this approval, I, I'm willing to take that under consideration.
What finds that, if you don't have, if you have a sign? It's just not gonna pass because the legislature's gonna say it's invasion of privacy, it's been there in Albany before, it's a long shot, but hopefully maybe this time it'll get through.
As a trial one, do people get active ti- I mean, do they just get a ticket in the mail that's a warning, or they act, it's active, active issue?
Well, it's, it's a ticket that, it's going to the vehicle, just like this.
Like, like you're running like a toll.
You can read this, it's, 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 it's our violation.
And I think it's not, I don't think it's.
It cannot go to, sorry?
I think, I think the village has heard you all, that's the whole point.
Right. But AJ, if this passes, we can have that discussion about signage. Again, I'm, I'm looking for compliance, and if the sign makes compliance, that works for my test.
Why don't we just put up the sign?
You don't want to get points if you pulled off a damn.
That's not gonna work. All right, there's some people here, one of those.
That's possible.
So, let, I would like to, uh, make a resolution, Resolution 3 of 2025, authorizing the village to sign on to the Home Rule Request for Stop, Stop Sign Cameras, so I just made that motion, second and.
I will second.
Jeff, do I have to do Secra?
Yes.
Okay, hold on, um, do I get to read the little speech? I'll do it. For the purposes of the New York, of the Secra Act, I move that the village be identified as lead agency, and that this action be deemed a Type 2 Act under Secra, having no significant impact on the environment, and that, as such, no further action is required under Secra. So I'll make that motion, can someone second the Secra? Ms. Dorfman? All in favor of both motions? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstains? No. Okay, we have two new policy, oh, sorry, we need to reapprove two of the policies, our sexual harassment policy and our, Marla, is the distracted driving policy new?
Distracted driving is clear, and so, sexual harassment one has been aspects to it that were, should have been implemented last year, but.
Okay. So I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna make, I'm gonna make a motion to pass this, each one individually, make a motion to pass the sexual harassment policy. Seconded, aye?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the next one, the distracted driving policy is a new policy, it's so that the people who are operating our village vehicles understand our policy about not being distracted while they drive, it is for the safety of our residents who are on the roads, and is for the safety of our village employees, I will make the motion to pass that, that new policy. Mr. Frankel, all in favor?
Aye.
Next, the employee policy of overtime, this is something we discussed last month, what we were looking to do is to change our overtime policy from double time to time and a half, but to help compensate our highway department, who are the only ones eligible for overtime, they are the only hourly employees, we were going to increase their salaries accordingly, so that they would be making more money upfront on a weekly basis and relying less on, on, on overtime to, um, make their final number.
And are they in favor of that?
We haven't spoken to them yet.
It, it's, it's.
It wasn't an option that we gave them?
It's not an option, it's, they're going to be making more money.
No, I'm just curious.
It's, it's something I think that is, it, it's better for them, and it's better for the village. What are you doing, Rich?
It just depends, you know, it depends how much snow we get, if we get nothing, if it works for us.
And there's some years we get nothing.
The last couple of years, we've had really no overtime, we've had, you know, little things here and there, but nothing crazy.
No, I think it's better to take the, take the guarantee than to, you know, roll the dice.
And for us, global, and for us, for budgeting perspective, it's, it's, it's an easier thing to budget for.
I wanna make sure that you're all the guys.
It's, it should be a good thing. So I'm gonna make a motion to pass our new employee policy for overtime.
Sir.
Thank you, Trustee Smith, all in favor?
Aye.
New employee policy, this came to me on Saturday, and I sent Marla an email, and she got to it this morning. I think it is very important that everybody, including ourselves, we partake in our annual physicals, and I believe that there are many people, and I used to be very guilty of this when I was working, not going to the doctor because I didn't want to waste my sick time or vacation time, I'd be like, yeah, 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 I'll get my physical, I'll get my physical, and then I'd skip a year because I never got around to it. So, in a moment of clarity, I thought it would be a very good perk for our employees if we would grant them four hours of paid time annually, so they can go get an annual physical. That's great.
Sure. I'm in favor.
Do we just believe that's what they're doing?
We asked in the policy, we are asking that they bring us some sort of doctor's note or proof acceptable to our village administrator that they went and.
That sounds good, I'll make a motion.
Because prevention is an important thing. That was Mr. Trustee Janice and Mr. Frankel, all in favor? I think we might be the first village to have done this, so.
That's a great.
Challenge all the other villages to copy the great Peter Flower Health. Marla, did we get all the information from the Katie Apo Run yet, or?
We've got our insurance.
Okay, every year for the last fifteen years, the Katie Apo Run has gone through our village, Liz Apo is a resident, her daughter Katie passed away from cancer, and we let them use the village park, and it's an amazing, great event, and we got the insurance, um, information from them, so I'd like to make a motion to approve the use of the park for the 15th Annual Katie Apo Research Fund Run on June 8th.
I will second that.
All in favor? All right, the Verizon Franchise Agreement. Yeah, no, this is an, uh-oh. So, we do not individually negotiate the franchise agreement with the cable companies as some villages do, the North Shore, we are part of a coalition with us, some other villages, and the village Great Neck, how many people are in this coalition, I don't even remember, if you don't remember off the top of your head, they all negotiate this, um, franchise agreement together, I'd like to thank former trustee Phil Clemency, who has served as our representative, sorry, fifteen, thank you, has served as our representative on the board, and I believe he's the chairperson of the franchise committee, so he's done a lot of work. We don't approve this as a board here, what I'm asking for, I'm asking for a lot, is for a majority of the board to attend this meeting, the date is, I didn't write it down, Marla?
Uh, Monday, April 28th at 7:00 p.m., at the Greenest South Middle School.
We need a majority of the board to be there to pass this, now, we don't have to pass it, and if we have any questions or concerns, by not having a quorum of the board, we don't get to have any of our concerns heard. I read this, I mean, the sad thing is, this franchise fee goes primarily for cable TV, and I don't know about you, I don't have cable TV. I have, yeah, some people do, my father loved this.
Oh, no, if you, if you have Optimum, that's cable, right?
Well, there's a difference, the franchise fee does not come on the internet, we, they only, we only collect franchise fees for the TV portion, not just, not Netflix, not YouTube TV.
I've had a lot of people put their TV from Optimum.
Or, or Verizon, less and less and less people do. I'm, I'm a hundred percent streaming.
You're cut the, you're.
I cut the cord.
I'm direct, I'm direct TV, so I don't have wire.
So, there you go, so you're not getting, what about yourself?
YouTube TV and all the streams.
You still have TV in the house?
My father-in-law comes over, he watches.
Oh, you have, okay. So, unfortunately, the franchise fees are less and less and less each year, I will send everybody an email separately to see if you can participate in this, it would be nice if you could come down on April 28th with the village, but if you can't, I understand.
Can, can I ask someone, please, like, two days before, email, maybe a text message, it's the kind of thing that I would forget, but I will, I will try to make it, I'm on trial, I'm on trial right now, I'm not paying attention to the rest of the world, but.
Hope you get off.
I, it looks good, and I probably should be on parole by the 28th.
All right, I'll email everybody to see participation, if they can't get a quorum, then we will all be relieved.
What is the Optimum franchise?
Optimum franchise.
It's not important, I'm just.
Was a bunch of years ago, I can't remember.
I don't have to look, I mean, they all, they're all like ten, fifteen year contracts.
Yeah, it's been many years, I, I don't, I don't, I don't remember. Yeah, no. We can look it up to you.
Is there a specific concern that you have to have us go there, like, we're happy with it, or not happy with it?
The only concern I have, which is a non-negotiable, is for them to put franchise fee on the internet connectivity, which is stable, not the TV portion of the bill, which is going down to eventually nothing, so, but that's not up for, that's never going to happen. So there's very little concern in reading, and, listen, if you want to read this, great, I don't know if Jeff's had a chance to read this, but there's, there's not much going on. But it might be good for us to be there, at least to ratify it, but I'll, I'll send you all an email accordingly, or Marla will send an email the next day or so. All right, Highway Superintendent Report, Mr. Falconis.
Well, we put all the snow equipment away, pretty much, it's still snow, but.
No, snow is banned, you apologized to Heather, so it'll never snow again.
So that's, hopefully that's done, uh, we had to do some of the cars on some of the trucks, just lights and things like that, that sometimes they break just from, you know, solid, it's snow. I went to Texas to do the, the shoe sweep.
Oh my God, tell everybody about the Timco Training.
It actually really, it, it's, it's a really good, uh, school, I mean, we've had our sweeper for thirteen years now, and some of the service that we were, we were supposed to do, we never did, uh, you know, you could send it to the, the place that we usually go for any repairs, they charge $195 an hour, um, I ordered some of the parts ready that we're gonna be doing here now, uh, but it, it's really just an all-service school thing, uh, most of the villages and, well, the bigger villages and stuff had the sweepers, they used the same ones, um, it was a really good school, and, uh, the servicing, that, that's really, I, I'm surprised that that sweeper is still the way it is, I mean, we just never touched, I, I didn't, I didn't ever know about these, these certain things we have to do every year, every two years, or whatever.
But now we know, which is a great thing, learning is always a phenomenal thing, and even better, they didn't charge you for the school, it's only for our, your airfare and the hotel, transportation, um, so this is a free school, I, I, from our conversation, you came away with a lot of good knowledge, and the work that we conduct ourselves, the maintenance, we'll be able to do a better job of the maintenance, which will extend the life of that important piece of equipment even longer. So, I'm glad you finally got to go.
And, uh, and we actually had a sweeper out, you know, we swept the whole village, it takes about two weeks to sweep basically the whole village, takes about five days on that side, five days on this side, um, you know, the sweeper was out, we're doing spring cleaning, we did all the traffic islands, we pretty much cleaned everything up, we're mulching most of the islands, pretty much all of them, except for the ones that we're still trying to figure out for the beautification committee, you know, what we're gonna plan and stuff, so those we didn't mulch yet, we cleaned them up, but we just didn't put down mulch, um, we still have a couple more to go, we're, we just finished cleaning the part two, that has to get mulched, but that'll be afterward, done with the traffic islands and stuff, um, we just finished up all the, all our mowers, everything got oil changes, all new belts, everything like that, we did here.
And again, saving taxpayer dollars, because we can do these types of maintenance ourselves.
We'll send it to, to a shop, and, uh, the oil changes for all our trucks, that'll be done, probably do it the next week or two, another rainy day, all our big trucks will get oil changes.
Perfect.
And then the usual, stop signs, streets on new face, you know, things like that, poples, we did more, we just keep going.
Excellent.
We'll be airing soon, hope so.
And you've spent a lot of work on helping us with the, uh, 2025, 26, uh, Roadsource Project, so thank you for that. Does anyone have any questions on the Highway Superintendent Report? Thank you, as always, Rich. We did the building report already, um, Attorney's Report, Mr. Blinkoff.
I sent around a report on the last, it was on my, it was a straightforward application, there was a home that had, already had a pre-existing condition in which their aggregate senatoric setback was a little, um, short of what's required, and what they were doing was proposing a project, it was just adding height to the dwelling, not taking out any further of the aggregate senatoric setback, but because it's going up high, the idea is that it could be some more imposing, uh, so we wanted to seek a variance, um, and the board found that any potential impact would be de minimis, and he granted the proposal.
Excellent.
So it was only to do with the, uh, aggregate, not to do with sky exposure?
Correct.
All right, President Mayor's Report, I already mentioned the election results, congratulations to everyone, um, we got a court grant, thank you, Susan Williams, fourteen thousand, three hundred dollars, which we are going to use for ADA improvements at Village Hall to make the building more accessible. I attended the Long Island Water Conference Legislative Forum, always very interesting things to learn about all the bad things in all drinking water and what the water just actually doing to clean it. Deputy Mayor, myself, and, uh, Trustee Lewdowski attended the State of the Town of North Hempstead address, great event as always.
Well, Mary Chilwell's in two roles, I guess.
Yes, but she was attending as.
Mostly the other role.
She was attending as her other role, so.
Just kind of her main role.
Yes, it is her job.
Oh, come on, come on, trustee of the village is very important.
It is, but that's, if, if she was, yes, I will thank her as well.
They pay her.
What, we, we get paid? Frank and I went to the NCVOA event, interesting, Marla, another one's tomorrow, yes, last month's, I was at the NCPD Commissioners Community Council Event, where there was an unbelievable, great presentation on what the Special Victims Squad does, and what's other excitement, the budgets? I haven't heard anything new on the Port Washington Boulevard Safety Improvement yet, and I'm sure when we do, I will let the residents know about that, and I am done playing mayor, I'm gonna turn this over to the trustees, and I'm sure Trustee Lewdowski would love to give us a report, the beautification committee.
Sure, uh, surprise, we've got some drawings.
Ooh.
Yes, so, um, I think, although, um, I realize we don't have, well, I guess because we're still gonna wait for what you just said, I'm for watching, I'm for watching. So, uh, we had a good meeting, uh, was it two weeks ago, not two weeks ago? And with the committee, um, the mayor was there, Marla was there, um, trustee, Rich was there, and the trustee.
And thank you, both of you, for, uh, staying late that day, so appreciate it.
Actually, Rich, uh, did we get all the cutting-edge work done then?
Yeah, I sent you guys an email a month ago.
Yeah, I just, I just didn't know if there was, because I, I couldn't, I, I rode, I drove by all the weekend, I couldn't quite tell, um, but maybe that.
Oh, no, you can tell.
No, I know, I saw, I saw what you, I saw what you put out, um, I guess, did they, did they get to the center tribe stuff or not?
Oh, yes, they did.
They trimmed that stuff.
Okay, I guess I couldn't tell, it was so bad that I couldn't tell.
Remember what, uh, what Steve, uh, the guy told you, he said, to either trim that, I'm, I'm guessing you're talking about the, those bushes that are kind of still sticking up, he said, do you want to remove those, or do you guys want to trim it, he said, first trim everything, we'll step back and look at it. So, it does, it, it does look a little funny.
Yeah.
Now that it's all cleaned up, it really sticks out.
Okay. So, anyway, so we had, um, an interesting, um, uh, development. development was, uh, at Waring, um, in New York, or the hood. We had a committee member who was interested in getting Rewild, um, Port Washington to help do some planting there. And so we're going to pursue that. The tricky part right now is because of there's no irrigation on these, is that, um, the recommendation from our landscape architect, we're all saying we should really not plant until the fall. So we kind of have to figure out, are we doing anything in the interim or are we just mulching stuff and we're just, you know, having to grin it there through the summer? And then hopefully, you know, get stuff planted and then things really, get things to get established and then kind of really come to life on next spring. So that's generally the plan.
Okay.
And we do have some stuff, so I don't agree with it all, but I think we should look at it.
I'm glad to see it. And I want to thank, uh, Ms. Beheft, if I can say her name right.
Yeah.
For, uh, doing her own little design with the Waring Avenue Islands. I thought that was a very nice little presentation she made.
Yeah, so we have some.
And the cost of the stuff for Rewild is really inexpensive.
Yeah, yeah.
It's definitely something to look at trying to do this.
Yeah, I, I, we should, we need to follow up with her because I know she wanted to. Well, and if you have any neighbors who would be interested in helping, she's kind of looking to get a core group of people who, who can kind of look after things. We potentially water, you know, that kind of thing.
And a lot of stuff she's looking to do is native, so that needs less water and less attention than more of that stuff. Any other trustee reports?
I am, so I had asked our council to check the definition of commercial vehicle. Because doing a little research myself, apparently New York City considers a vehicle commercial if it has non-commercial plates but signage on it greater than three inches tall. That depicts a, a business. So I'm just curious how our code, we don't have a definition. I look, there's no definition of a commercial vehicle. But what, you know, will, do we allow people to park, you know, a truck, a big truck, in their parking lot, in the front, in their parking lot, in their driveway, in the front yard with a giant advertisement of their business on it?
When you say truck, you're not talking about a panel truck, you're talking about.
Pick up, pick up truck or a minivan or something. Anything that has an advertisement on it for a commercial business, whether it has commercial plates or not. I'm just wondering if that's something that we should allow and do it.
So, under New York state law, there would be a requirement that there be commercial plates on the vehicle for it to be deemed commercial. But while not a definition in this code, I am aware of other codes and other villages in which I work, their commercial vehicle could include the same type of definition that's in New York City. So in New York City, they have some criteria and it, and officers going by and sees the placard, even if you don't have commercial plates on it, you're going to get a ticket.
Right, right. That's only in New York City. You know, it doesn't apply to the rest of the state.
But the, but the village could modify its code. And what I would also like to investigate is, you have sign provisions.
Well, that's what you're saying, yeah.
And there's nothing that says that a sign can only be something that's on a state, but a wood plank, right? I just need to investigate the, the definition.
Yeah, or advertising, you know, or advertising a business, you know, in your front yard of your house.
So is this.
Because it's on a vehicle.
So is this a widespread village issue or a smaller issue?
I don't know. I, you know, I know that there was a couple of, there are a couple of commercial vehicles that are parked in the village. I've seen them when I, I went back on the weekend. I mean, I, I don't know. So I'm just bringing it up as, is this something that we want to just let go? Or is this something that, because, you know, if you live across the street from these people, you're looking at this big giant pickup truck that's six feet off the ground and, uh, you know, giant graphic body collision. You know, it's like, is that really, is that in keeping with the, um, the characteristic of the village? That's all I'm trying to say.
I think it's something Jeff can look into, you know.
And if it can't be, it can't be, it can't be, but.
It's, it's just, it's not, it's not, it's not a widespread issue. It's a small spread issue. I, I, I have seen one vehicle that you're referencing. I don't see it there all the time, but I do see it.
There are more and more now.
But throughout, you, you bike a lot more than I do. I don't see too many other vehicles like that. But it's just something, it's, it's.
It's just the owner of the vehicle that's in the house, right?
Affirmative, yes.
So we're mad that they're taking their company truck and parking it at their own house? I'm not following.
It's, it's a vehicle that advertises their business that they park in their driveway as their regular vehicle that they drive around.
We can't, I felt it would make a living. I don't know, I feel a little.
So I am asking if it's a widespread issue or a specific issue.
Well, we're just out to certain things in cars and people are, you know, a kid gets into college and put a huge decal across their entire backboard.
Well, that's different.
It's incredibly tacky and I get that, but just saying, where's the line that you draw with advertising?
Why don't we have Jeff, why don't we have Jeff do the research and then we can take it from there? I respect people having questions and we should look into if it's something that the village can look at. And then we can decide to board if it's something we're interested in dealing with based on complaints on our trucks. All right, if nobody has any other questions, next Board of Trustees meeting, seven PM, May fifth, twenty twenty-five. Make a motion to end this meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
It was one forty.
Yeah.